All right, perfect. Thank you, Brian. All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 25th, 2021. Because we're still under a state of emergency, we're doing these meetings virtually, which oh, by the way, we'll be discussing tonight, to see if we can rescind that. So without further ado, just for housekeeping, Mr. Todd Johnson will join us. He's just a little bit late. So I just want to put that, get that on the record. So without further ado, why don't we jump in? So we have scheduled items, 7 o'clock, DPW school facility presentation. Who's going to be leading the way here, Mr. Hardeman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Brian Gilbert is logging in. I don't see him on here yet. Richard, do you know if he's having trouble getting in?
He might. I haven't heard from him, but I know he's invited. You want to just kick us off, Kevin, and introduce the players and we'll go from there?
Certainly. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm Kevin Hardeman, the town engineer. We're here to present the update on the DPW school maintenance facility. I'm joined by Brian D. Filippis from PMA Consultants. He's the owner's project manager for the project. Jeff Alberti is the consultant doing the design work for Weston and Sampson. His team includes Tony Westpizer, who is also on the call. And that, that's it. I'm going to turn it over to Tony. He's got a presentation to share with the board, so we can get that underway.
Thanks. Actually, Jeff Alberti, this is Jeff Alberti from Weston Sampson. I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay, and I can run through that presentation.
Jeff, could I interrupt Jeff just for a minute? Brian Gilbert had trouble signing on. Webex and I just don't agree. Can I just, before we get started, just give a quick history for those at home and those who weren't on the board at the time, that we got this project started? Just a little bit of context, if I may? Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Okay, sorry about that. So the purpose of this evening's presentation is to share with you and the community the work to design a new DPW and school maintenance facility at the existing site at 999 Whipple Road. Back in 2014, funds was set aside for feasibility study for the DPW. The DPW contracted with Kaffee Associates, who was the architect for the town hall, and she laid out a schematic layout of renovation of the existing facility, construction of an addition to our equipment storage, and construction of a separate fleet garage. That effort went to a vote in 2017 as a debt exclusion and failed to gain support. So in 2018, the DPW came back with goals and objectives for the coming year, and we presented those to the Board of Selectmen. And we outlined the high priority items that needed to be addressed, including the building envelope priorities, ADA modifications, and construction of a new fleet garage. Code, storage, and safety issues were not addressed other than with the construct or construction of that, the fleet garage. As part of that discussion that evening, the question arose, why preserve an old building that when the investment has been made, doesn't meet the needs of the department or the community? So in 2019, as part of the FY 2020 budget, design funding for a new facility was approved. The projects program not only included the DPW, but also included the schools' facilities department. So over the past year, working through the COVID shutdown, the team has defined and designed a project that will meet not only the needs of the DPW, but the schools and other town departments that rely on the DPW facility, both today and well into the future. So I guess I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff, if you're ready there. Take it away.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. I will go ahead and share my screen. And hopefully you can see my presentation on your screen.
Yep, perfect. I just don't know if you want to blow it up into presentation mode, but we can, we can certainly, we can see it.
Let me do that right now. How about, is it showing you the presentation mode?
Oops.
It's showing you the side panel, Jeff, the preview panel, showing us.
You gotta show the other screen.
Okay, let me try that again. Sorry, folks.
No sweat, no sweat.
I'm used to using Teams. Webex, Webex is a new one after a year. I've seemed to have tried everyone. Let me just try sharing my screen.
Hopefully, in the very near future, the Zoom and Webex stuff, you know, will, will be face to face, hopefully.
I was excited. I thought originally I was going to be coming in person, but no such luck. Can you see, can you see it now? Is it full screen?
Perfect.
Okay, great. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this evening. And what I did, I have put together an agenda to outline the work that's been completed. It's been an interesting year. We, we basically programmed and designed this facility virtually, but it's been very productive, and we've taken opportunities to really go through the site when we could social distance and gather the data, but it's been a great process. And tonight, what I'd like to do is walk you through these agenda items, starting with Public Works and School Maintenance Responsibilities. I'm sure that you, most of you already know what these departments do, but it's important for anyone else that's watching that we outline that, because that's really the driving factor of this facility. And we'll go through why does the town need a new facility, show you some photographs if you haven't been to the site. We'll talk briefly about what is proposed, and then what the benefits are of a new and improved facility. Certainly, there are many benefits for the school maintenance department, as well as the Department of Public Works, but there are a lot of benefits for the community as a whole, since this facility does serve that community as a whole. So let me start with the Public Works Responsibilities. And really, the first line sums it up best, where it says that the DPW touches the lives of the residents every day by maintaining the infrastructure that the community relies on. Now, I could probably spend the whole meeting talking about that, the work that DPW does, but I try to highlight some of the major elements, starting with repair and maintenance of 160 miles of road, to 20 miles of sidewalks, over 3,000 catch basins and manholes associated with the townwide stormwater system, to the water infrastructure, 180 miles of water mains and structures, to almost 100 miles of sewer mains and 46 pump stations, to the maintenance of about 155 pieces of equipment for DPW, police, and other departments. And also, they're responsible for the engineering services for all their capital improvement projects and townwide permitting. So if you think about what you use or what the residents use on a regular basis, that, that line, that first line really rings true, that the DPW is touching that infrastructure that everyone is relying on every day. And that's important, because that's really what's driving this facility again. It's also important to note that it's not just the 24-hour, a regular eight-hour day. They're on call 24 hours a day to handle emergencies such as snow and ice storms that we're all very familiar with, to hurricane and windstorm cleanup. It seems like it's been a year of windstorms that, that I recall, trees coming down all the time, to emergency road repairs, or to just generally supporting the other emergency departments around town. In fact, APWA reporters said it best in one of their magazines, that public works are the first responders who are there until the emergency is over. And since 2009, DPWs have been classified as a first responder. And so that's important to note, because this facility really needs to be designed safely and efficiently so that DPW can respond to the needs of the community in an efficient manner. It's not just a garage. A lot of people will call it the barn or the garage. It's, it's much more than that. It's an operations facility. It's a branch of the emergency services offered by your community. In addition to that, as part of this project, there was the opportunity to include the school maintenance as part of this facility. And we spent some time with them and interviewing their staff as well, and really beginning to understand their responsibilities. And again, this highlights some of the work that they do, which is pretty significant, from maintenance of, of eight buildings, which includes seven schools and central office. It's about a million square feet of space that they're responsible for preventative maintenance, as well as the maintenance of approximately 165 acres in ground, in the grounds. And that includes everything on the preventive maintenance side, from carpentry to landscaping, to plumbing, HVAC, and electrical, to dealing with snow removal activities. So again, some pretty significant responsibilities of these two departments, making this a very important facility for the town. So why does the town need a new facility? If anyone's had a chance to get out there and look at what they have, just wanted to highlight some of those, starting with the existing main facility at 999 Whipple Road, shown here with the red arrows. That was built in 1962. There was an expansion done on either side of that existing, the main building in 1980, but really, they have not seen any significant improvements in the last 40 years. On top of that, the school maintenance department has been displaced by the new school construction. And over these years, what we've seen is that the responsibilities have increased significantly over the decades, along with the vehicles, the equipment, and the staff. These facilities no longer serve the needs of the town or the department, and this impacts the efficiency of operations. And more importantly, it really impacts the safety of the employees working within these substandard facilities. And so one of the goals really is to address those issues and provide a long-term, safe, efficient facility for the town. As you kind of zoom in and look at the facility, if you drive by quickly, it actually doesn't look that bad. They, they did a nice job with some painting in recent years. But that's again, if you're driving by fast, as you slow down and look closely, you can see that the envelope is deteriorating. This is a mass wall construction. It's an uninsulated, likely unreinforced concrete block wall because of its age and exposure. There's a lot of spalling with the block, the exterior envelope. There's damage to many of the openings. And as you really get in and dig into some of the envelope, this is a picture of some structural steel that's really rusted out, and you can see those rust stains that are just coming down along the face of this concrete wall throughout. So showing some leaks over the years, really impacting the overall structural steel. And as you move inside and look at the inside of these block walls, also seeing a lot of deterioration, indicating that it's time for this, this building to be replaced. As you move inside, we look at some of the basic employee support spaces. So again, a very critical staff to the town operations. And this is what we found. This is some of their lockers, and you would expect to see these in a locker room. But in fact, as you zoom on out, they're located right next to the vehicle and equipment storage area. So they're in the vehicle storage bays, which is really not an appropriate place for the staff to have their locker spaces. Some of the other basic employee support spaces, starting in the upper left, this is their muster room. This is a room for 30-plus people, and if you just count up those chairs, you can imagine you're not going to fit 30-plus people in this space. Here's another view looking across that space. This is a critical room where staff will gather, they'll muster, they'll get daily assignments, but they'll also be functioning and operating out of this during storm events, sometimes 24 or 48-hour storm events. So just not sufficient space to support the operations. Upper right shows some of the deficiencies in storage for the office areas, and then the toilet facilities, really outdated in the bottom two pictures, and in need of upgrade to meet current codes. As we move on out to the vehicle maintenance area, what we found is that the spaces do not meet acceptable industry and safety standards. The interesting thing about the maintenance base is that they're all divide, they all have dividing walls, CMU walls that are supporting structural steel, so you can't just take them down. And as a result, you have these narrow bays for vehicle maintenance, which is not typical in the industry, and that results in non-code compliant shop clearances. If you look at the two photographs on the right, outlined in red, you can see there's really no space next to the equipment and the vehicles for staff to safely and efficiently maintain this equipment. Same thing in the bottom right. And then if you look to the left of that, you could see some of the support functions, such as tire storage, which is critical to the operation, or the fluid storage. It's just stacked up because there's just no room. So really not meeting industry standards. The spaces, because of their age, are poorly ventilated. You have antiquated mechanical systems, poor lighting, definitely in need of an upgrade. What I found really interesting is that, and I find this with all these facilities. We've been involved in over 100 public works facilities in New England, and in this fleet, as in most communities, it's a multimillion dollar fleet that you've all invested in. And the DPW does a really good job of trying to protect that fleet. And in order to do that, it's critical that that fleet be stored undercover. And as you can see from these photographs, they use every square inch of this building to protect as much of that fleet as they can. And this results in a very inefficient situation with equipment stacked in here. You can imagine if you need something in the back, how long it's going to take to pull out this equipment in an emergency, if it's needed to be accessed. But it's critical not only to extending the life of that equipment, but also to reducing the long-term maintenance costs of that equipment. As you really kind of zoom in and you look at the different photographs here, in the upper right, you can see a truck backed up probably to within six inches of the wall. In the bottom right, you can see very, very tight spaces. In fact, as you begin to look at these, you have overlapping plows that are parked, overlapping vehicles that actually have mirrors that in some instances are overlapping, so you have to take them out in sequence so that you're not impacting the vehicle next to them. So very, very tight quarters, but they do the best that they can. What this does, though, is this really limits the ability to egress through these spaces. You can, I'll go back here, but you can imagine that as you egress through these spaces, there's inadequate code required clearances between these vehicles, making it unsafe for the staff. So that's something that we want to continue to address. So while they do a really good job of putting that equipment indoors, they just can't fit it all. And as a result, a large portion of this multimillion dollar fleet is left to be stored outdoors. And this photograph, this is an aerial showing you some of those areas highlighted in white boxes of where that equipment, where there'd be larger vehicles, pickup trucks, or plows, or towed equipment that is stored outdoors. And we've done numerous studies over the years that have demonstrated that storing this equipment outside will absolutely reduce the life expectancy, really increase your maintenance costs, and is a detriment to the responsive, the responsiveness that the DPW is able to provide if it can't get equipment started or cleaned off during an emergency, especially during inclement weather or cold conditions. So to sum up those deficiencies, and I don't mean to sound all negative. This is really setting the stage for the really important part, and that's how are we going to address all these deficiencies? But let's sum it up with the existing facilities are 40 to 60 years old, or in the case of the school maintenance, they don't have those facilities anymore. The existing buildings don't comply with today's building codes. They don't meet the plumbing code from a locker shower toilet facility. We saw the lockers in the storage garage earlier. They don't meet today's mechanical code, and all of this results in operational inefficiencies. And again, safety concerns for the staff that are working in these conditions. So let's move to the next phase of the project, which is, after we've gathered all that data, we wanted to come up with what is proposed? What do we need to meet the current and future needs of the town? And really, the most critical part of this, and having done over 100 of these, is every town does it differently. So we spent time conducting interviews. And again, this was done virtually, and, and your staff was tremendous. They really adapted and helped us to gather all the data that we needed through multiple online interview processes. But we interviewed all the staff. We verified the program requirements. We developed a comprehensive list of the vehicles and equipment. And then we prepared programming sketches. And these are sketches of every space, from an office to a locker shower toilet facility, shown in the upper right. You can see the lockers are in a room, not, not the storage garage, to properly sized muster, training room, storm event room, to some of the shop and maintenance areas, all the way up to the vehicle and equipment storage areas. We use this to work with the DPW and the school maintenance staff to identify an initial needs assessment, broken down by each of the major operating areas, from offices to workshops to the vehicle storage. We came up with about 65,000 square feet between the two departments. We spent some time refining it. We were able to reduce it down to about 63,000 square feet, so roughly an 1,800 square foot reduction. But we did work hard to see if we could further reduce it. We felt that this was an optimal size to meet your current and future needs. So the next step in the process was to take this program and create building block plans for each of these major areas. You can see on the left, the office and office support, the employee facilities and workshops. So take the square footage and create blocks. And so this is the existing site, and you can see on the right is Whipple Road running north-south on the page, and Pine, Pine Street running left-right. And you can see the, the existing site located in the center here. So you have a salt storage structure here, in here, and the main facility is here. And then down in the bottom left, that is the, the... Help me out, Tony. That's the...
Food pantry.
Food pantry, sorry. That's it. Thank you. So we have the food pantry, which we're keeping as part of this. So as we went through this, we created these blocks, and you can see on the left, the Phase 1 blocks, based on that program, and on the right is the Phase 2 blocks. And the reason we haven't broken up into phases is, in order to build on the site, we obviously have to keep the operations running during construction. So we came up with a strategic plan to separate out certain components that we could build and use as, at the completion of Phase 1, while we build Phase 2. And I'll walk you through the sequencing. So taking into consideration the existing operations, we took the Phase 1 blocks on the left, which include vehicle maintenance, a portion of the vehicle and equipment storage, as well as some canopy storage. And as I mentioned, here you have your existing facility shown here in the center, highlighted in beige, and the two salt sheds that we wanted to keep in operation. And we began, in the food pantry, and we began piecing together these blocks. And we actually prepared multiple alternatives. We identified the advantages and disadvantages, and ultimately came up with this as our preferred Phase 1 building layout. And as you can see, it's situated in a manner to avoid the existing operations, allow the facility to function, allow the salt operations to continue, to allow the food pantry to remain in operation, as well as the fueling. So it's really worked well from a site perspective. And what that also provides us is the ability to build this Phase 1, and then relocate the operations out of the main building into this Phase 1 after it's completed, allowing us to then demolish the existing building now shown in red, and create a clean slate so that we can begin constructing Phase 2. As part of that, not only would we use that existing, this now new construction to support the operations, but we would also be providing some temporary trailers for some of the office staff that would be located adjacent to this new construction during the Phase 2 construction period. So as part of Phase 2, with now a bit of a clean slate, we take more of the operations component of the building. This is the office and employee facilities, and we piece that together on-site with the shop areas, as well as some additional storage for school maintenance and DPW. And then on the end, a wash bay, which would serve all town vehicles. So using that, this is the final site plan that shows all of the components, where you'd have this dividing line represents Phase 1 to the left, and that would be the vehicle storage, vehicle maintenance canopies. We'd also be doing some expansion of the salt shed, as well as reconstructing the fueling facility. And you can see in the gray shaded areas, the site circulation that would be provided. And then to the right would be Phase 2, which would be more of the operations, the offices, employee facilities, school maintenance shops, and vehicle storage, as well as the townwide wash facility for vehicle washing. And you can see that we've provided some access off of Whipple over here on the right of your screen, which then connects through onto Pine and provides the ability to have the public access the Phase 2 operations building without driving into the yard, which is critical from a safety perspective. So after going through multiple alternatives, this alternative not only worked really well from a construction phasing perspective, but also works really well from a site security, site safety perspective, and really serves the needs of both the DPW and the school maintenance facility for many, many years. So I just wanted to give you a bit of a taste of what these buildings look like from the outside, and I'll talk a little bit about what's inside the Phase 1 and Phase 2 buildings. So if you take a look at this red arrow on the bottom of the screen, that's View, what I'm calling View 1. So looking from Pine Street back towards the building, although we'll have screening along each of the roadways. We're maintaining a natural buffer, and we'll continue to maintain that natural buffer and plant additional landscaping to help shield it. This is what the building would look like while on the site. And you can see on the left-hand side, these multiple doors here represent the vehicle maintenance component. And over on the right-hand side is access to the vehicle storage area. Some of the key takeaways, you can see a lot of translucent lighting, and this is really great from a sustainability perspective. Helps to introduce the natural daylighting into these facilities. These are super insulated buildings, long-term operationally, a real benefit to the overall community. And then as you move over to the Phase 2 operations building that's shown, you can see View 2 looking from Whipple, and View 3 also looking from Whipple. These are the two views here. And really, the takeaways on View, on these two views, View 2 represents the main entry point to the facility, as shown by my mouse here. And you can see there's a lower massing along Whipple, and that represents the office and employee facilities. Steps up a little bit to the right, where you have some vehicle and equipment storage. This is kind of drive-through, pull-through for towed equipment. And then in the bottom right, you can see the vehicle wash bay that is accessible to all town vehicles. So very cost-effective, pre-engineered metal buildings, but with factory foam insulated panel, masonry bases for long-lasting structures for this type of function. So let me talk a little bit about what goes into each of these buildings. So the Phase 1, this is the Phase 1 floor plan. So this is the vehicle maintenance, vehicle storage component. And I'll just highlight the main areas. The first, in a light brown here, is the vehicle maintenance area. And as part of this, I'll show you a couple of photographs. These are recently completed DPW facilities to show you the improvements that you'll see. And this is an example of a, of a facility. You can see all the bays are open, providing much more circulation, proper lifting equipment for the fleet. Here's another view without the vehicles inside, so you can see, you can see across the entire bay. You don't have that separation, those separation walls that really were, are restricting the current operations. The larger gray area, this is the vehicle and equipment storage area. These are some sample photographs where you actually pull your vehicles in. They park at an angle. There's room for the plows to be stored and kept there. This is really a tremendous configuration, because every piece of equipment is immediately accessible, depending on the need, whether it's your daily need or an emergency need. This is the most inexpensive space to construct, but it is protecting one of your most valuable assets in this fleet that you've invested in. So it's really a tremendous benefit to the DPW and the community as a whole. But we don't just jam everything indoors. We recognize that space means money. And so we also identified some canopy spaces shown in yellow, and they kind of bookend the storage garage. And what those are, are three-sided. We, we use the outside wall of the storage garage, and then enclose it with a roof and some sidewalls. And what that does is that provides some covered storage for equipment that doesn't necessarily need to be minimally heated. And that does help to extend the life of that equipment, also prevents it from getting it snowed in or iced in. And it's much less expensive. So it's a great compromise to just putting everything undercover. And as I move over to the Phase 2 floor plan, the more of the operations building, as I talked about, you can see there's a lot more interior spaces and a lot, a lot of smaller spaces. And so what this includes is an office area for DPW and school maintenance, shown in green. And basic, some open office areas, some private offices, conference rooms, your basic office support functions for the operations. And adjacent to that, in purple, are your employee facilities. This is the locker shower toilet facilities, as well as proper muster room, storm event room, contractor check-in areas. So it's your basic employee support spaces, but really critical to maintaining that operation. As you move to the back of the building, you have the orange area. These are your trade shops, again, for not only DPW, but for school maintenance. And these are accessed through smaller overhead doors. These have the workbench areas. This is where you'll see that carpentry work, HVAC, electric plumbing work, as well as storage of smaller equipment and materials, really vital to the operation. And then we bookend all of these with two smaller storage areas on the left. In gray is the vehicle storage area for the school maintenance equipment, vehicles and equipment. And on the right is some additional storage for DPW. This is more specialized storage where a vehicle can pull in with equipment in tow, and then pull straight through, so you're not wasting time trying to connect it and disconnect it every day. So it's really a benefit to the operations. And then finally, on the right-hand side is the vehicle wash bay shown in blue. And again, that would be accessible to all town vehicles. And this is a photograph of a recently completed one. So it's a dedicated wash bay, really helps to maintain your fleet. Not only does it have pressure wash wands on either side, but it also has an undercarriage wash system, so vehicles can drive in, hit that undercarriage, get it clean, really helps to extend the life of that equipment. Okay, so taking all that, and it's now important that we look at the costs. And we've been working with our own internal cost estimates, as well as independent cost estimators. And the owner's project manager has also been working with the cost estimator, so we could really get a handle of the market. And I'll show everyone in a moment what's going on in the markets. It's a very volatile time. But let's start with where we are today. And looking at the project cost summary, we broke it up into the different phases. And the first phase, broken up in... And the first phase broken up in the top quadrant by the building construction costs, site development costs and then design. Contingencies estimating contingencies and escalation. And that amounts to about seventeen million dollars. On top of that are your soft costs. This is all, uh, any fees, OPM fees. This is all other costs, including printing of bid documents, uh, moving costs. It would basically cover every other cost associated with the project. And we include a construction contingency for a total project cost of about twenty-one million dollars for phase one. Uh, as was mentioned earlier, there has been a previous authorization of about two point two million dollars. So that would leave your remaining. Request for phase one at about eighteen point eight million dollars. Now, because it's in, this is done in phases, phase two. Uh, similarly broken down in the way that was just summarized is about sixteen point three million dollars. You see that the site development costs are significantly less and that's primarily because. A larger portion of the site and infrastructure is going to be developed in phase one. But you'll note that the estimating contingency and escalation is higher and that's because we're escalating this out, uh, into the future. We've included additional soft costs to complete phase two for a total project cost of about eighteen point five million. Uh, and because we've already accounted for the previous, uh, previously authorized funds, uh, that remains blank in phase two. If you sum that up, uh, you can see the total construction cost about thirty-three million. Total project cost about thirty-nine point five, uh, and then taking out the authorized funds about thirty-seven. So I know those are, those are. Large numbers, no question. We're, we're dealing with this all the time and a lot of folks. Will ask is, is this real? Is this what these facilities are going for? These are not. These are not, um, overdesigned facilities. They, they are designed to meet today's codes. Uh, they are basic pre-engineered metal buildings, but they are operations facilities, not just barns or garages. And the best way that I can show you how does this compare is because we've been building these for 20 years, we've kept a really good database. Of the average cost per square foot for construction costs. And so the darker blue line represents the average cost per square foot. Uh, for these facilities based on actual bids. This lighter blue line represents an escalation. You can see it's just a linear escalation based on five percent. Uh, depending on what the market's going to do. But what's been really interesting, so this, we had prices up through two thousand and nineteen, then we hit COVID. So twenty twenty was a very strange year. We did actually bid a project, a large DPW project, and we saw a dip. We saw a drop in the cost per square foot. Refer to this on our plan as the twenty twenty pandemic dip. And unfortunately, what we've seen now, uh, maybe it's fortunate that we are reopening, but because. Economies across the country are reopening. We're seeing what we've never seen before, and that's a pandemic spike. And this is being driven, driven by, uh, supply chain shortages, labor shortages, um, although that labor shortages. People might say, is there really a shortage? They're having get trouble getting skilled labor back to work. Uh, but more importantly, it's the material costs that we've seen significant spikes. And so again, this is based on. Actual bid prices. So a very significant spike for twenty twenty-one. Things are starting to settle down. And the question is, are we going to return back to the light blue line? And the answer is likely not, and we, we expect that it's going to be probably a new norm somewhere in the middle. And using our best judgment and using our estimators, we've actually, if you look at the average cost per square foot. That was shown to you earlier. It falls right about this, uh, where this green dot is. So you can see that it's. It's above what historic data used to show, but is taken into account, uh, this, this impact of the pandemic. And we're not expecting it to fully return primarily because the economy is in a different state. You have the federal government introducing significant funds. So we expect that this will remain for, uh, for quite some time. So that is all reflected within this estimate. Um, and that moves me to the schedule. And as you can see by this red line here in May of twenty twenty-one. We're in the process of wrapping up, uh, our design. And so ultimately, uh, we're planning on finalizing the, the, the design over the summer. And then seeking funding at the fall town meeting. With the potential to bid the project in winter twenty twenty-one, allowing us to start. Work in spring twenty twenty-two. It's a great time to start and hopefully attract a lot of bidders. That would complete construction in July of twenty twenty-three. And then from there, phase two could begin with bidding in the summer of twenty twenty-three. And then it would have a fall twenty twenty-three start and that would go out about fifteen months, thereabouts to a construction completion of. The end of twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five. So it works well from a construction sequencing perspective. And it allows some move out time in between the two projects. So I just wanted to, I know I've been talking a lot, but I'll try to close it up here with. You know, what are the benefits? There are significant benefits, not just for the DPW and the school maintenance department, but for the community as a whole. And that starts with a code compliant safe work environment for town employees. That's number one. Uh, protect the town's multimillion dollar investment in vehicles and equipment, as we talked about earlier. This will result in more efficient workspace, better response times to better serve the public. And it does create a consolidated public works and school maintenance campus. Which will improve overall and fish efficiencies for the departments and really provides the ability. To more efficiently share resources between the DPW and the school maintenance department. They, they have a lot of similarities and so this really should benefit, uh, both departments. It eliminates the need to invest money in Band-Aids in the existing substandard facility. And as you really get into it. Uh, that building would need a lot of work to just bring it up to current code. Uh, and then it replaces a facility that really has reached past its useful life, has served the town well. Uh, but it would replace it before it becomes a mandated emergency replacement. So with that, um, I can stop sharing my screen and, uh, open it up to questions.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. That was a very good presentation. So let's open it up to the board for questions. How about we start with Ms. Stronach?
Wow, making sure I'm paying attention, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, thank you very, very much for that presentation. I was. Um, actually when the, uh, I appreciated Brian's, um. Overview of what this project was all about and why we're here where we are today. I think it is really important that we committed to the town residents. That we would not be going out for a debt override on this particular project. And I just want to, through you, Mr. Um, Chairman. Have Richard speak to, um, when we're talking about the funding of this. Where all those millions of dollars are going to come by if we're not going out for a debt override or if that is still. If that is still the case.
Good, Mr. Chairman. Um, so we have set aside approximately one point one million dollars, uh, within the FY twenty-two budget for debt service. Uh, we have approximately eight hundred and fifty-two thousand in the. Uh, general fund, um, set aside and. Hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars set aside in the water enterprise fund and another hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars set aside in the sewer enterprise fund. The goal would be to use the, uh, funding that we have, uh, set aside in the budget. If, uh, revenue comes in, um. Higher, uh, in regards to state aid or in other areas when we close out the fiscal year and start the fiscal year in July. Uh, we may be able to put more money, uh, in those, uh, budgets to help. Um, fund, uh, the first phase of this project. If that's not the case, then, uh, we would go to, uh, the, uh, the reserves that we have. To help bring down the first years, uh, the first phase cost. To allow us to fit the debt service within those numbers that we talked about. Based on what I looked at, uh, quickly. Um, you know, to borrow, to come up with, uh, funding of nineteen million. Based on the money we have set aside, uh, we could borrow, uh, somewhere around fifteen point five million dollars. Uh, use about three point five million dollars in reserves, uh, from either, from a combination of water sewer and general fund. Uh, should, uh, should get us to the point that we can, um, move forward with phase one. And that's based on about a two point five percent interest rate, uh, which right now is, is high. Interest rates are closer to two, uh, for, uh, that type of borrowing. So I'm still confident that we'll be able to do this, uh, without a debt exclusion. Question will be, when can we and when will we start phase two?
That was going to be my next question. Do you think that you'll be able to continue that into? Phase two, or will that have to, um, go out? I do want to say. I did tour the DPW and that building absolutely has, um, outlived its useful life. And the staff down there in some parts of that building, in my opinion, from what I saw back then were, um. There were some safety concerns for me back there. And I know that they had been addressing some of those with the Band-Aids that, um, we just spoke about. But, um, what is the confidence level for phase two? Um, I don't want to get into a situation where we are. Residents are thinking that we're doing a bait and switch. So. If, and this is, you know, the first time this board has seen the whole presentation, which is very exciting. Um, but I do think we need to get this out a little bit broader. So that people understand what is going on down there when we're working on this. And, um, if there is the potential to go back out, we need people to know. That now rather than, um, waiting is my sentiment. And I'm not sure how you feel about that, Mr. Montori.
So, um. You know, there, there's definitely not going to be a bait and switch on this project. The, the, uh, hope is that, um. You know, revenues from the state, uh, come in somewhere in the area that we're seeing, uh, uh, now, which is, um. Three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollars higher than projected. Uh, if we could utilize that towards, um, debt services project, that will go a long way. Um, depending on where interest rates are, depending on how much of our reserves we want to put towards the project. Mentioned somewhere around three point five in the first phase. There may be an opportunity in the future to use more, uh, from our reserves. So it's just going to depend on how our revenues look and, um. How much of our reserves we still have intact, which, you know, we have a, we have a. Clear amount of reserves and three at, between enterprise fund and the general fund. So I can't say right now when we would have that money to do phase two. But I'm confident that, um, we'll be able to get there, uh. Again, uh, without, uh, doing a debt exclusion. That's the goal.
Oh, that's so great to hear. And I didn't mean to infer that we would do a bait and switch. I just want people to understand that we are doing this with inside the tax levy. And that phase one, we are pretty confident and we are hopeful for phase two, but. I just want to put a disclaimer on phase two for myself because I think it's pretty hard to project. Um, that far out hoping that, um, especially. You know, coming out of the pandemic, I'm, I'm not sure about our finances. I know I say this. And it might sound a bit of an alarmist, but I do worry about, um. Future revenue streams. So I just, I'm going to say that out loud. I really appreciate the efforts put forward. I think that this is greatly needed and I, um. I'm going to have, uh, probably some more questions as we go on. But I guess my only other point, Mr. Chairman, is that we now need to, um. Have a broader outreach so that people are aware that, um. This is designed to this level at this point. And I agree with him on construction prices. I don't, um. I don't think we're going to see pre-pandemic construction prices, but. Maybe we'll get lucky. That's all I, I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. And thank you, Mr. Montori.
How about, uh, Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you for the presentation. Uh, that was excellent. Uh, it's very thorough. Um, you did a great job, um, Mr. Gilbert of, um. Highlighting how we got where we are, uh, as Ms. Uh, Stronach said. And then also showing us how, um, and antiquated and inadequate our operations, um, currently are due to the state of the facility. Um. I wanted to, uh, ask a couple of quick questions, but, um, ultimately for me, safety is the first priority, um, of safety for our staff. Um, I work in risk management, so that's a concern. And, um, that's again followed by protecting our taxpayer investment in our fleet. And the ability to do, um, fleet management and maintenance. Um, quick question, is there an area for hot works in the new facility?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to answer that?
Sorry.
Please, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, there is, uh, so in the vehicle maintenance area, we would have a area set up for, uh, welding.
Yep. Okay, great. Um, I don't know if we currently have that in our, in our facility. It's so tight. And with fluids and everything stored in there, it's, there's just a lot going on right now. So being able to do that kind of work onsite will be important. Um, I like that there's a vehicle wash incorporated into, um, the facility. I'd love to see if that could be incorporated and I'm not going to ask you to change your design, uh, but into the phase one option. So we could use it right away. Um, would be huge. Um, so. My question and, and Mrs. Stronach started to get at this was how we're going to fund it and where, was the intention to seek funding for both phase one and phase two at Fall Town Meeting? Um, it seems like that may be a continued conversation. Um. So. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about running down, um. Reserves and protecting our bond rating at the same time. So it would be good to, to look at some of that math. And, and, and continue to explore some options, running everything inside the levy limit. At least phase one, I think we can probably do it in the levy limit. Phase two is, I'm not sure we would be able to, to accomplish that. Um, and I'm certainly open to, um. Bringing this to the voters and having them talk to us about what they're comfortable with. Um, but I fully support the project. I think it's, um, it's necessary. It brings us efficiencies. Uh, by combining the school maintenance, um, department and our DPW, um, staff and our fleets. Together under one roof, um, our, our school maintenance, uh, folks are displaced and they're in, I think rented facilities right now. Um, and, uh, that's a great temporary solution, but it's not a long-term solution. And, um, we do have a lot of, um, important, um, vehicles and equipment that we need to protect and be able to use and respond to your point about first responders quickly. Um, to the different kinds of, um, challenges our, our folks face every day. Um, I really like the upgraded facilities for our staff. The muster room is really important. Um, the, um, locker and, uh, shower facilities are very important and I've, I've toured that building. I've been in that building many times and. What they have right now not only is unsafe, but is just, um, just grossly inadequate. So it would be great to bring. To bring this, um, this facility up because it does support. Every part of the resident experience in this community, driving through the town, water, sewer, the very basics of, of residential life. Um, are served by the, um, the men and women of these departments. So it's really, really important. That we address it and I take, I thank you all very much for your professional, uh, work and dedication over the past year. It's been a challenging year for everybody. Um, I hope this was a bit of a fun project to kind of work on and try and, and, uh. And, uh, bring, bring to fruition. And I look forward to, um, continued discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman. How about, um, Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, great presentation. Uh, I too have been down at the DPW facility. It sorely needs to be redone. So I think this, this looks like a, a, a great project. Um. Again, concerns are around the funding of it. Um, great to hear. We've thought, we've got two phases. We have a plan for phase one. My question is, if something happens, again, turbulent financial times. If something happens and phase two needs to be pushed out for an extended period or becomes unviable. Uh, did we assess that? Phase one is what we need and we can go some period of time without phase two. Again, it's understanding the whole project holistically is needed. Uh, but if something were to happen, have we given considerations to what ongoing operations would look like, well, only completion of phase one?
So I can speak from a engineering perspective and, uh, operational perspective. And then certainly if, uh, any folks from the town like to. Add, uh, additional information, that would be great. Um. When we broke out the two pieces, there were really two key elements. Number one was the vehicle maintenance operation, uh, that was probably one of the. Toughest areas from, uh, employee safety perspective. And so we felt that that was critical to get. And so we felt that that was critical to get that addressed as quickly as possible. Uh, and also that is one of the hardest functions to find a temporary home for. You can't just put them up in trailers like we could with some of the office spaces. And so what really boiled down to is that operation being in terrible shape and also being difficult to find temporary operations. That was the key to the first phase. Um, and then extending the covered vehicle and equipment storage was a benefit as well. If you were only to build Phase One, you would still be left with, uh, inadequate space for offices and employee facilities. Cause that's not really addressed in this component and really wouldn't be appropriate because of the location and that's type of uses. Uh, but that building could certainly continue to be used, but it might involve investing in some of those temporary repairs to extend it. And also potentially consider moving school maintenance if the rented facilities weren't suitable, um, into this as a, as a stopgap measure. But, uh, our decision originally was based more around the operational needs and the safety needs to come up with the Phase One components.
Understood. Uh, anyone from DPW or Mr. Montori have any kind of thoughts on, same question?
Um, if I could jump in, um, I, I would say, uh, Jeff hit it on the, uh, the nail on the head there. I mean, uh, you still keep the, um, existing facility. So we'd be able to continue to work out of that. Would have to make some, um, you know, some repairs and invest some, um, finance, uh, you know, some, some money into it. Uh, school could move into the vacated space of the, uh, the fleet, um, division. Uh, but we could operate, I think is what you were basically trying to get to. And I think that we could do that, yes.
Yeah, just again, with the, uh, uncertainty around finance and building cost, et cetera. And the kind of desire to make sure we don't have to, uh, do debt exclusion. I just wanted to make sure that if we get Phase One done, something goes sideways, we're not, we're not left in a unreasonably bad position. So, thank you. Um, other than that, uh, the only question I wanted to clarify on was, uh, Ms. Wellman had asked if the intent was to go for the full thirty-four or thirty-eight million in the fall. Uh, is that the plan or is it just the first Phase One?
Right now, we've talked, right now, we've talked about going for Phase One. Um, but again, I'm going to assess, uh, the situation when we see what our finances look like. And is it worth getting the entire amount authorized at least, even if you only go forward with Phase One? So, um, well, as it gets closer to July, we'll, a little after July, we'll start looking at that. I mean, and, and just a couple of things we're going to be looking for is what state aid looks like and what our new growth looks like, uh, once, um, we get closer to August. And if both of them provide us, uh, additional revenue that's, we can put towards this project, um, that'll be the goal.
Thank you. Uh, that's all. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, but, all right, where do I start here? Um, first off, you know, there was, that definitely was a great presentation. And just for the residents and like, um, Ms. Wellman said, this was just planting the seed. This is the first time that kind of we got the visual in understanding the cost. I think we need to do a lot more, uh, around the cost. But just super quick, um, how long is this, this design, what's the shelf life of this design? Is it, is it two years, five years? So the blueprints that you all laid out, how long does that, how long is those blueprints good for, uh, do they last, the design?
Um, that's a, that's a tough one to say. It really depends on, uh, what kind of code changes are, are planned ahead. And, um, but I will tell you that there's been significant code changes in recent years. And I wouldn't expect that, um, there would be anything that would overwhelmingly cause the design to have to be redone. So I think that it would, if anything, if you had a code change, it would just mean upgrading, updating plans to match the latest code. And I can't imagine would be significant at this point in time. So you could get a couple of years, but you would definitely need to do some revisiting at that time. I think more than a couple of years might be a little too much.
Okay. And I should have prefaced, like many of my colleagues, I've visited the DPW and it's a dump, flat out. I mean, there I said it. So we all, I think we're all saying the same thing where we need a new facility, um. Uh, you know, then the question comes cost again. I've been down there. We know we need a new facility. And, you know, I don't think we have a plan. I'm going to consider this Plan A, maybe, you know, Mr. Montori Plan A. But I think we need to take a step back and consider what's Plan B, what's Plan C? Because even when the new elementary school goes up, which is, you know, it's well on its way, the school maintenance, they're going to, they kind of have no home. Is that a fair assessment?
That's correct. Right now, the school, uh, maintenance, uh, facility, uh, is being housed out of a, uh, a location on Washington Street. They're renting a, uh, an industrial condo in that location. Uh, the plan that we've talked about, uh, would be when the fire station, uh, is built and open and they vacate the center station, that we could move the school maintenance facility over to the old fire station temporarily, start paying rent at the current location and give them some time.
Okay. Uh, I mean, for me, like I said, I think this was kind of planting the seed. Um, I would like to see, I love, I love options, you know, Option A, B, C. I don't see any options here. It's kind of like, hey, boom, here's Option A. And what comes to mind is, you know, we have, um, the Trahan School as an example. That parcel of properties in the next twelve to twenty-four to thirty-six months will be available. The North Street School, uh, in lieu of the new elementary school. So again, maybe just consideration, um, is, is coming up with options. Cause right now there's really just the one option in front of us. So, um, I like to maybe consider or, or there has to be other options outside of saying, hey, here's, here's Plan A, here's the price tag. So again, just, just feedback. And I know this is the initial call to have that in a public forum. So all good. Um, so Mr. Montori, this is where I might challenge you here. You know, a lot of folks, you, we do get along very well, but sometimes we do lock horns. And this is a situation where I might lock horns with you and say, I, I don't see, oh, you know, the eighteen, first eighteen million of Phase One, maybe we can get there, maybe. Um, I just don't see it for the second phase. I, 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 I don't see it. So maybe to put it in context is we take a step back and you put that all on paper. You know what I mean? And again, a lot of it is a guesstimate. We're coming through the pandemic and what we're going to get for state aid and local aid. So I think probably your next best steps would be to come show us, you know, build out that two to five, the six to seven year plan and see how we'll get there for that second eighteen million. I just, um, you know, I, 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 I don't see it. I think it's wishful thinking. Um, because to have another, you know, I'm just thinking we potentially need another debt exclusion. And we get past Phase One and all of a sudden we're going back to the residents for another debt exclusion. And as you know, we have the fire station, the elementary school, um, and we still have, the third is the sewer debt. So I'd like to see how we kind of maybe think about the existing debt exclusions and see how we might look down the road. Again, now the twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six months, how we plan, uh, maybe the sewer debt exclusion is coming off. And, and then we can really take a hard look and maybe we can make that eighteen million, um, in Phase Two with some of the, um, debt exclusion coming off the books. But now I just, I don't see it. And again, that's going to be, let's put some stuff on paper, um, and, and see how that really works. Cause I'm going to, I'm going to really question that to the max. Um, but again, this is a good first initial pass. Um, I think I had some other questions as well, but I think you get the gist. So I'm kind of just digesting this as my, as the board members are and as the residents, I think it's a good initial start. But I think there's a lot more questions, uh, around the dollars and cents. And again, I'm going to repeat myself because I'm good at it. Um, we definitely need a facility. We need a maintenance school facility. That's not the question here for me. The question is around cost, just in lieu of, uh, we're one of the few communities in Massachusetts with three, three debt exclusions. And I always say we're not affluent in Tewksbury. I mean that in a good way. So, um, I, I just don't see how this will get passed. The residents is this age, uh, maybe I'm wrong, but I have a hunch that, that, um, we could be a little bit of trouble here if we go for debt exclusion here in the next one to two years, um, in lieu, in lieu of the elementary school and the new fire station. So, um, with that being said, I said a lot, uh, but maybe I'll just revisit, maybe the other board members have other questions or concerns based on a good, very good dialogue. So anything else from the board, um, Ms. Stronach, Ms. Wellman, Mr. Mackey?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, Johnson has joined us.
Mr. Johnson, I know if you caught the preview, you had a very good preview about the potential, the new design, uh, for the DPW and the school maintenance, you know, with associated costs. So I know you came in late in the game, but I'll offer it to you anyways. Do you have any questions for the commit, um, for the folks on?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, I just joined the meeting and, um, I, I'll watch it on, uh, replay and, and get up to speed on it. And then I may have some questions, but I appreciate it. I apologize for being.
Oh, that, no, that's fine. That's fine. So, Mr. Montori team, what I was thinking is, um, I think I have a gazillion questions. So because this was the initial, um, discovery phase of the project, what I like to do and make a recommendation to the board is we take our questions. We forward them to Mr. Montori and Mr. Gilbert, and then we revisit this, you know, in a future meeting, uh, so we get more comfortable. And I think, Ms. Stronach, you might have said outreach is going to be key here for the residents, um, to understand what we're trying to accomplish. And more, most importantly, the associated costs, you know, of the project. Does that sound reasonable?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. And I just wanted to, uh, echo your sentiments on seeing additional courses of actions. Uh, I too like options and that was kind of the path I was starting to go down with. If we don't get Phase Two, what's the plan? So I would love to echo that. More options are better, uh, especially if those options are cheaper or can reuse something we already have built. So, thank you.
Okay. Okay. And just, I guess before, Mr. Montori, I'll probably have a few, I'll, I'll close up with a few comments. But Mr. Montori, anything to add on your end?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, everything you laid out, uh, and everything the board's laid out, um, uh, excellent points. Um, we'll start working on, uh, options, uh, if Phase Two, uh, is delayed or doesn't happen, uh, at all. I'm calm, I'm still going to maintain, uh, being confident that we can do this. Uh, it's going to be, um, no doubt a challenge. We like challenges and, um, we'll, um, we'll put something together on paper for the board to look at, um, over the summer and, um, and, and see where we are. But again, it's all going to come down to where the revenues look, what the revenues look like come July, August.
Okay, sounds like a plan. And just for the presenters and, and Mr. Hardeman and Mr. Gilbert, again, this is, it's good stuff. We know we need one. We're going to get there, but again, we just got to really, um, uh, do a lot more due diligence, if you would. So don't get discouraged in any way, shape or form. Um, again, what the board's going to do is we'll take our questions and we'll forward those to Mr. Montori. And we look forward to having another session in the very near future, uh, during a, you know, a selectmen's meeting. That's all. All right, I think we are good.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, team. Alrighty. All right, just moving along to the next scheduled item. Look at this. We're almost on time. Um, and for eight o'clock schedules, Entertainment License, Wamisett Lanes, three forty-three Main Street. And this was continued from our last meeting, May eleventh. So, Ms. Wellman, could I have you share, please? So, uh, Mr. McLaren sent into the board today. Um, so we had some approvals last meeting. Uh, we wanted to take a step back and actually, Mr. McLaren was gracious enough to invite a lot of the residents because a lot of residents had, um, you know, concerns with the noise volumes, live bands, et cetera. So, um, we actually, some of the select board met with Mr. McLaren at Wamisett with the residents. So maybe before we go too deep, uh, I wasn't able to make it, but maybe does any of the board members kind of want to give a high level summary of what that meeting was all about? What transpired?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, uh, I'll jump in on that if, um,
Okay.
colleagues will permit me. I, I want to, um, indicate that, uh, a week ago, I think it was, uh, last Tuesday, um, we, we, uh, met at, uh, the outdoor patio at Wamisett. Um, Mr. McLaren was present. Um, he had some of his staff available. Um, and we met with, uh, a number of the neighborhood, um, abutters and nearby, uh, neighbor residents, um, from, from the region or area surrounding, um, the facility. Um, and, um, I, the takeaways that I got were, I think, um, some of the comments were that, uh, that type of conversation and interaction had not taken place in the past. Um, it was viewed in a positive light. Um, there was a lot of, uh, exchange of concern on the part of the neighbors. And, um, you know, some communication by Mr. McLaren. Um, and he, um, was, uh, willing and gracious enough to demonstrate, um, his new, uh, amplification system and the controls that he has in place on them, um, that go to the, um, uh, decibel level and controlling the, the noise um, to stay within, uh, the town's, uh, bylaw structure. Um, so there was, um, you know, some conversation, some concerns were registered. Um, I was joined there by Ms. Wellman and Mr. Mackey. So there was a, a quorum, um, of the selectmen. And, uh, we also had Mr. Montori present as well as a police officer, um, who brought a, uh, decibel meter and did some testing in the area a couple of times. Um, so all in all, I want to commend all the, um, principal parties involved. I thought that it was a valuable exercise. If you recall when we met last at our board meeting and had the hearing, that's one of the things that I was trying to encourage, um, in terms of, um, you know, those who had concerns and, uh, Mr. McLaren to communicate and have a discussion around the concerns that exist. And, uh, hopefully, um, you know, make some progress, uh, towards, um, a way to cohabitate, if you will, without intrusion, um, on one another's, uh, needs and issues. Um, so I think there was some progress made. I, um, you know, no one was, uh, um, out of line or out of order. Everybody came to the table with the idea of expressing their opinions and views and, and identifying their needs. Um, and I think that exercise was, was worthwhile. Um, and I know that this board has had some communication from Mr. McLaren since that, um, engagement with the neighbors. Um, that kind of spells out, um, some of the changes that, um, he has, uh, tried to modify in his original request. So, um, I, I hope that represents, uh, Mr. Mackey and Ms. Wellman's perspective, um, of what transpired. I think it was a worthwhile endeavor and I again want to commend, um, both parties, the neighbors and, um, Mr. McLaren and, and Wamisett Lanes for making that effort.
Mr. Johnson, well done, well done. Ms. Wellman or Mr. Mackey, anything to add to Mr. Johnson's comments or feedback?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would only add that, um, I would, I agree with Mr. Johnson's, um, um, comments. I thought that it was, um, a very good exercise for all the folks to come together there. I'd love to see, see that again. Um, I think, uh, people felt that they, the residents felt that they could, um, share their concerns. Um, there was a lot of responsiveness, I thought, on the part of, um, Wamisett. I thought it was really good exercise to have a police officer go over to the neighborhood and take, uh, baseline measurements over the course of, um, that day and over multiple hours. Um, that was a, that was an interesting exercise. And we also reviewed, um, the bylaw and the mass general laws that apply here and found some incongruities. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Montori will speak to that a little bit. Um, we sorted it out among the residents there about how sound is perceived in, in the individual properties. Um, and that the bylaw that the commercial property is working under is, allows a louder sound, but it's how it's perceived in the residential zone. So, um, that was an important distinction that came out of that evening. Um, and, um, it was really great to, um, see Mr. McLaren demonstrate the sound system and the controls that he has there. I thought that was, there was a lot of good, um, discussion. So I was very glad that we did that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wellman. Mr. Mackey, anything to add or?
No, Ms. Wellman, Mr. Johnson hit the nail on the head. And, uh, I just wanted to point out that it looks like, that I'm glad to see that that conversation did continue. Uh, the live band was the kind of long pole in the tent. And it looks like from that continued discussion, Mr. McLaren has since removed those. So that's, that's good to see.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So it brings kind of us to the forefront here. Um, we did close the public hearing on May eleventh, I believe it was May eleventh. So I think we got the feedback. We listened loud and clear, um, and hence the meeting, uh, at Wamisett. So now, um, maybe Mr. McLaren, I'll give you the floor and maybe, you know, just, just to get your view of how it went with the residents on that, um, last Tuesday. And then maybe you can jump right into, um, to what you're requesting, special applications here for the board for this evening, Mr. McLaren.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I'd thank everybody that came down to, uh, to check it out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I thank everybody that came down to uh, to check it out. Um, you know, we wouldn't, we've been working pretty hard on trying to adjust our uh, our, our sound system. I know we had uh, we had a prior meeting, same type of setup with all the neighbors coming down back uh, a couple of years ago and, in May in twenty nineteen, kind of went over the same type of uh, details. And uh, I know there were some sticking points and it was nice to have the, the police officers involved to kind of explain it in a little bit more detail for, for all parties involved. Um, so, yeah, we're here to uh, we, we listen to everybody and appreciate everybody's input from that meeting, from the neighbors and from the um, and from the selectmen. And you know, we're looking to try to move past this and, and, you know, and continue to be an entertainment center that uh, that, that attracts people from all over the, the community and, and from outside businesses to bring, bring business to Tuxbury. So, you know, with that, we've um, made some adjustments to our um, application, which would be removing uh, live bands. As Mr. Mackey said, that, that was a sticking point. And um, you know, we, we, we did what we did here and uh, we replaced that with uh, DJs and microphones to make it kind of consistent with everything else that we're requesting, things that we can control under our sound system uh, confidently and um, with, without issue. So uh, we, yeah, we have our ladies' nights every Thursday, starting um, in June twenty-fourth. That's our, our kickoff. Um, again, with the DJ microphone and that follows up with the luau right after that. Running down with the dueling pianos, again, all of our events are ending uh, at eleven o'clock. We've had prior requests years passed at midnight. Um, and again, those were other sticking points that the neighbors had concerns about. So without question, we've, we've eliminated that conversation, just stuck with eleven o'clock. And then we've got an outdoor comedy show. Uh, we've got a couple already slated right now. We're pretty excited about that. And then movie nights on the patio, free movie night for the kids. And then again, uh, as you move down the list, the, the DJ and microphone replacing the live bands.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McLaren. So at this time, let's open up to the board for questions, comments. Let's start with uh, how about Ms. Stronach?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for everyone's work on this. I appreciate uh, all of the collaboration and I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Very good. How about uh, Ms. Wellman?
My, I'm, I'm good. I'm not muted. Okay. Um, no, I um, I appreciate the um, elimination of the bands. That was something that I, I wasn't going to be able to support um, for a number of different reasons. But not um, because Mr. McLaren wasn't trying very hard to, to uh, provide a good, a good service to the town and the community. But also um, you know, he's trying to work with residents. But I was never gonna support this band. So I think that this um, this amendment to his request is good. Um, there are a number of dates on it, as you can see. Um, and the, the DJ microphone events kind of, I think there's um, there's a, like a Friday and a, and a Wednesday and a Thursday. I'm not sure. So um, they, they kind of bounce around a little bit, but it looks like most everything except the movie nights are on Thursdays and Fridays. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yep.
Yep. Um, love the movie nights. That's always been done very well. The comedy shows, I think will be interesting to see how they come. Um, and how the sound works outside and if people can hear really clearly. It sounded from your system really crisp when we were there. Um, and um, and uh, let's see. The dueling pianos, I think will be, it will be interesting if it can stay within that sound limit. Um, so it'll, it'll be interesting. I, I have no particular issue with these events um, as listed. My only request is that um, we consider adding something to the um, the entertainment license that if there's an issue um, that comes forward and unanticipated, um, where, you know, something happens uh, that we can perhaps request uh, police detail for future events of a like nature. Um, or rescind some of those. And I'm not anticipating that, but I don't know if we need to include that. So um, anyway, those are my thoughts. I think it'll be a great summer um, up in this section of town. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wellman. How about uh, Mr. Mackey? Uh-oh. Yep.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, no questions. Just wanted to reiterate the comment. It was, it was good to see the uh, the work put in by all parties to come to this, uh, this list. Looks like a good list. Again, we removed, the bands were removed, which makes, I believe, a lot of people happy, myself included, because that was a sticking point. Um, and to Ms. Wellman's uh, question about possibly adding additional clauses. Uh, I think that for anything that hasn't been done before, adding the option to possibly add, if there was a problem, a police detail should definitely be something that's in consideration. Um, in the interest of fairness uh, to Mr. McLaren and Wamisett, I would say that we think very carefully before we add uh, any additional ability to rescind an event just because of the amount of time, effort, energy that goes into planning, scheduling some of these. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. And we can talk about that. I mean, like anything, whenever we give an application out, whether it's liquor, food, entertainment, you know, we're always a public hearing away from taking action. So I think that's understood. But if someone wants to like just highlight that, which I think Ms. Wellman and Mr. Mackey did, you know, I'm just highlighting it because it's a fact, we do it, you know. So we're, we're always a public hearing away from reviewing the applicant or app, you know, the, the application um, if there is an infraction. So I think we covered that. How about Mr. Johnson?
Sorry about that. Gotta remember to hit unmute. Um, I'll echo the comments that were made a few moments ago by my colleagues. I think the, the biggest um, improvement here is the elimination of live bands. Um, clearly that was a concern. So I applaud that effort. Um, I also picked up, and I just want to clarify, because I think this has been a source of confusion um, on the part of a number of people on all sides here. But um, it even says on the screen in front of me that Ms. Wellman put up the movie night on the patio already covered under the entertainment license. I, I stand to be corrected by Mr. Montori, but I believe we saw communication that indicates that that is not accurate. Um, so um, there may be movie night previously approved, but I suspect it may have been indoors, not outdoors. So I just, I want to just point that, that out um, for clarity's sake. If we're gonna vote on something, we should address that um, so that it's clear. Um, but um, I know that in the last meeting, there were some dates approved. And Mr. Chairman, I respect your comments and appreciate your comments as the licensing authority. Um, if someone violates a license, um, there's always an opportunity to bring that license holder before the, the board. Um, I think it's more difficult for this board to go backwards if we have previously approved something. Um, so I've kind of come at this a little differently and I, I just want to offer this. I'm not gonna make a motion just yet, but I want to offer this thought process. And I'm trying to balance um, the need for Mr. McLaren to have clarity and planning opportunities with the concern that our board has expressed and certainly many of the neighbors have expressed. And my thought process is to potentially consider approving these dates for these various activities for the months of June and July, the specific dates in month, uh, June and July. Um, and then schedule uh, Mr. McLaren to come back in, in early to mid-July. Um, and if everything's gone well and we haven't had any concerns or problems, we can address the month of August and the month of September. Um, and that would allow him certainly a few weeks of lead time planning like he has now for June. Um, and it would allow this board to respond to um, any concerns, issues um, that, that may or hopefully not um, be raised. But um, it, uh, in my opinion, it's harder to unring a bell than it is to give permission to do something. And I'm thinking that, that may be a, a reasonable approach um, rather than um, address all of these dates with the concerns that have been levied. Um, so just something to consider. But I, again, with my opening comments of the meeting summary, I think there's been a lot of improvement here in communication and an effort. Um, so I'm hopeful that um, we can, I'm, you know, unfold the process here that in the end gets all of these dates. But I'd rather take it incrementally from my perspective.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Johnson. For me, Mr. McLaren, you must be doing cartwheels on May twenty-ninth, right? I mean, we talked even last two weeks ago, we didn't know if this was gonna be, come to fruition, but, but here we are. So uh, I'm, I'm, I'm happy for you in that sense. Uh, I have no, exactly, yep. And we're gonna be talking about that a little bit here about our, our resending, some of that stuff. So, so good news on that front uh, for you and, and, and all the businesses in Tuxbury and, and, and the state. So that's good news stuff there. Um, same deal here, you know, I've been on the board for a little bit here. And I always said the live band, you can't really tweak it, you know, they start playing all kinds of instruments and folks start singing and dancing and clapping. There's no way you can control the decibels and you listen to us. So um, I have, I have no issues, um, I, I have no issues with these requests. And again, we're not trying to be like, um, we're not trying to be hard, a hard board. But you, you know, if there is an infraction, you know, we can always come back in front of the board and have that public hearing. We, we don't want that to be the case. We hope that's not to be the case. But I just think it's a little bit reassurance to the residents where, you know, there was, there's a number of them that if there is an infraction, you know, we do have a mechanism to step in and take action, that's all. And I just, um, and hopefully that's never the case. And I know you don't want that to be the case, Mr. McLaren either. So um, but I just wanted to share that with the residents that were um, concerned with these matters, that's all. So that's it from my side. So there's no public hearing. So I would, at this point, open it up to the board. Uh, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess um, I'll uh, offer that motion that I was alluding to. Um, and see how my colleagues feel about it. But um, I'll go through the list. Um, I would offer a motion to approve the ladies' nights that are scheduled on Thursdays in the month of June and July. Um, the dueling piano on July second and July sixteen. Comedy show on June twenty-five and July nine. Movie night on July seven and July twenty-eight. And the DJ and microphone on June twenty-four and July twenty-three. Um, based on the hours that are represented on this document.
Okay, I have a motion in front of us. Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Please.
Um, first of all, I appreciate uh, Mr. Johnson's motion. I am uh, I understand where he's coming from with saying that it's easier to take away sitting on this board for as many years as I have. I've actually uh, been a part of uh, when we have to do uh, revocation of a license. And it is um, not fun. Um, so I do appreciate that. But we only meet once in July. Is that correct, Mr. Man, Town Manager?
That is correct.
Do, could you tell me when that meeting is scheduled for?
A second. I believe it's a seventeenth.
I think it's the thirteenth.
Or you know.
Thirteenth. July thirteenth is the next, uh, is the July meeting.
So my concern with that is that um, we won't have missed the opportunity for um, the August sixth, the August tenth, and then obviously, we're meeting in the evening on the thirteenth. So there'll be three events from my quick read of this that we won't be able to attend to. Um, if, if that is where people are sitting, then I'm very concerned that um, we're hindering for something that sounds to me that went very, very well in terms of the meeting. So, I mean, I did second the motion. Um, but that is a concern of mine.
Mr. Chairman, just to um, add to that, we can change the meeting. We can also have a meeting just for this one topic if we needed to earlier in the month. And I respect what Mrs. Stronach is saying, but um, I think we can adjust to that to facilitate what I'm proposing.
And um, I appreciate that, Mr. Johnson. I'm just saying that I do think that we should, if we are going to move forward on that. Um, you had mentioned mid-July. Um, so I just would like to make sure that we do that.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Any further, I, I'll, I'll, I'll just, I have a little discuss, I'll add on to the discussion. But any further discussion for, for Ms. Wellman? On the motion?
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted. I'm like talking, unmuted. Um, so, yes, I have a, I, I just kind of want to flesh a few things out. Um, so movie night on the patio um, was done last summer. Is that correct, Mr. McLaren? Yeah, I, I think it was.
Yeah, all of the events were, were done in twenty nineteen and they were done under a probationary period where I had to go back and prove that we were not going to be in violation. And we weren't, we were not in violation. I would just hate to go back through a probationary period after proving myself once already, um, having a clean, pretty clean slate.
Yeah, with, with the movie nights on the patio, um, I remember, I, I, I thank you for the clarification for twenty nineteen. Um, those are mostly family movies, correct? Outdoor family movies.
Family movies, yep, exactly. Kids, kids' movies, free movie night.
Yep, yeah. Um, and based on the conversations I recollect from uh, from last week with the, with the local residents, um, most were comfortable with the ladies' nights, um, the luau, the movie night on the patio. Um, most were comfortable with the DJ and the microphone. Um, nobody was comfortable with the band. And so, like I said, I think I'm comfortable with that. Um, I, you know, would offer a friendly amendment to Mr. Johnson's motion. Um, and he can, you know, reject it or whatever, but sort of my thinking is, I'd rather say yes to more things um, in total, so that you can go ahead and schedule your, your, your events. And you know, that takes a lot of planning.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of work and, you know, puts a lot of time and effort into, to wheeling and dealing with these guys. And obviously, these guys want to schedule their events for their summer, too. They're getting back into entertaining other centers. And the last thing I want is to be able to give up on those, those opportunities.
Sure. So for, for a number of those, I, I would, I would offer a friendly amendment to um, I'm comfortable personally with the movie nights on the patio um, entirely and the luau and the ladies' nights entirely. The comedy show, knowing that we can bring folks back. Um, and, and then maybe um, sort of a partial matter on the dueling pianos um, would be, would be something I would, I would be comfortable with. But truly being able to say yes to more things, I think is good. Um, I do, I do recollect that uh, Mr. Chairman, you said that we can bring anything back forward. But I also don't want to have to have any sort of a revocation hearing. I appreciate Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Stronach's experience in this matter and um, and their uh, caution. Um, I think is, is interesting. So I'm, I'm open for that discussion and I offer that friendly amendment. Thank you.
And, and I, I would accept that amendment, uh, our addition to my amendment, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that's a valid point.
Okay, so we, okay, then, then we'll get, we'll get to that. I just, we'll further discussion from the board. Mr. Mackey, there's a motion on and Mr. Johnson's willing to amend, but let's continue with discussion if you have any?
Uh, yeah, so just quick clarification on the amendment. What was, what was removed was the only thing I missed. I believe it was the, was it only the dueling pianos?
That was my, that was my concern. Let, let that go forward for a few, um, and then, and then see how that plays out for particularly the July second event is more, I don't think I need two nights. Um, I would approve July second, July sixteenth, but I think we could, we could approve the remainder nights after that second. Um, just based on some of the resident feedback is all, is where I'm coming from and that, that's my only real concern.
So uh, I think again, there's a lot of events here. I think there was a lot of goodwill shown by Mr. McLaren and the residents that came out. Um, I would like to, to see us echo that goodwill. Um, it's, it's, it's been a rough year for, for everyone, especially the entertainment industry. And again, based off the goodwill shown by. again, based off the goodwill shown by all parties here, I would like to see us echo that. So I would, I would like to see this list in its entirety be approved. But if the discussion is removing August 6, August 27, oh, sorry, August 6, August 27, September 17, I would, I would be okay with that.
Okay. And I'll just conclude the discussion, and we'll put the motion back on the table. I'm, I'm feel the same way as Mr. Mackey here. I don't think we're in the business of, let's approve, and then 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 we'll judge. You know, we have mechanisms for that, for that level of enforcement. So I just think it's like, so I just don't, don't necessarily agree with, let's, let's, let's give it a trial one. And and what are we gonna do if Mr. McLaren comes back in on, let's say, whatever it is, July 2nd, or, you know, July 13th, we're gonna say, you know, what would be our course of action at that meeting? Look for infractions, or, you know, talk to the residents again? I just don't understand what our course of action would be. So but but we don't need to discuss that. But I just want to at least share you my thoughts were. So with that being said, we have a motion, and we have an amendment. Maybe we just let's spell out the amendment to be clear, because I'm a little bit confused, too, if it's additional dates, or it's just the dueling pianos, you know, with a date. So maybe, Mr. Johnson, just to refresh the board, you want to level set your motion, and then we'll go, we'll go from there?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So just considering Ms. Wellman's friendly amendment, I guess my motion at this point would be to approve the dates for ladies' nights, the luau, comedy show, movie night, DJ and microphone, and approve dueling pianos only July 2nd and July 16. Have Mr. McLaren come back to the board in early July relative to the August and September dates for dueling pianos.
Okay, so, Mr., just we're on the same page, I think we are, Mr. Johnson. So you're essentially approving even August for the DJ and microphones, as an example. Your, your motion approves essentially August or September. Same for the comedy show and for the luau. And so really, essentially, it's a dueling pianos, correct?
Yep, I'm accepting Ms. Ms. Wellman's amendment. Yep.
Okay. Okay, so I have, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's all right.
I do have one question of, thank you, everybody, for the very thoughtful discussion, by the way. I do have one discussion for Mr. McLaren. Let me ask you if we, with regard to the dueling pianos. What, tell me about the decibels on the dueling pianos, because you did have the dueling pianos prior, correct?
Correct. I had the dueling pianos four times back in 2019. Did not violate any decibel readings. That was as a request from you, Ms. Stronach, to do a probation period, to make sure I do not violate it, which is why it's kind of concerning that we're going backwards to the same thing where I've already proven myself on this. And it's absolutely impossible for me to come into a July meeting to advertise, to market, to have a full facility for an August or September showing, and never mind advertising and marketing for it, but being able to book it. So if we do not approve the August 6, 27th, and 17th, we will not be able to have an event August 6, 27th, and 17th. So we're ultimately just canceling those events to be able to market the way that we do it, and to be able to book it accordingly, because we get the pricing differently, and the bookings differently if we do it both times.
Thank you for that. I do remember having that discussion about the dueling pianos, because at that time, I was concerned with that, as we were concerned with the band. I am ready to vote when, unless it's some other discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other discussion on Mr. Johnson's motion that was seconded?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, really briefly.
Okay, please.
The, the reason I made that amendment, Mr. McLaren, was the resident commentary about crowd noise and the singing along. And so that's specifically what this is speaking to, that you you did do your probationary period with the dueling pianos, and and the residents spoke about that. So your, your sound system seems fantastic. It's the crowd noise. And that was a lot of the concern and the conversation we had last week was about how do you manage the crowd? And if you recall, that was, that was a topic of conversation that came up last week. So that's the, that's the genesis of the amendment that I made. And it certainly know, I appreciate very much how challenging that is to the way that you need to schedule and book your business. And I, I regret that. But that's my concern vis a vis the residents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And if there's no further discussion, because of virtual meeting, we have to take a roll call vote. So Ms. Ms. Stronach, how do you vote?
No.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
The chair is a nay, so it's 3-1, so the motion fails. So with that being said, do I have another motion? Any other motions entertain?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to put forward a motion to accept, accept and approve this document in its entirety, with one addition to alleviate my colleagues' concerns of having a police detail on 2 and 16. And if there are, we can, that gives us more evidence should we need to readdress and take the rest of those back. So that improves that mechanism that was discussed about needing to readdress the license.
That's reasonable. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, you have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Ms. Stronach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
And the chair votes aye as well, so it's 4 to 1, so the motion passes. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. McLaren.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, perfect. Okay, moving to the next order of business is residents. Mr. Dorrington, do we have any residents on the line?
Mr. Chairman, it looks like we have a caller coming through right now. If you want, just give me one second.
Okay.
Okay, caller, whenever you're ready.
Yes, I thought this was an open meeting tonight. There isn't other people watching the show. My name is Keith Pollock, I live at 31 Veranda Avenue.
This, we closed the public hearing last week. The public hearing was closed. This is, this is, this is the resident section. So you're absolutely, you got five minutes if you would like to wish to have any public comments?
Yeah, because nobody, nobody mentioned it. That's why I say we thought, that's why I'm calling in, because we thought it was a public hearing, because we were told that this was going to be a public meeting.
Why, we apologize for that. It was, it was a clear vote last week to close the public hearing. So but anyways, proceed. We have a lot of, Brian, we have a lot of background noise. I don't know if the resident could just turn the TV down?
Yes, caller, can you just mute the TV in the background, please?
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry about that, sir.
Tom, sorry.
I'm sorry. What I need to, my, my, again, my name is Keith Pollock, I live at 31 Veranda Avenue. We did think it was a meeting, because you, you should be having other callers coming in, because we are watching this currently. So anyways, the question is, you talk about Mr. Montori, how are we going to measure the sound? That was one of the things that came up, is that if he's going to have all these things that are going on, and I'm especially concerned about the dueling pianos, because one of my problems is when he wasn't on the probationary, probationary period, he did have singing, and I complained about that, because people were singing along with that. So that's not a backlog. That is a situation that there's a problem. That's, that's live. I don't know if that's going to continue. But that was one of the problems. The second one, again, Mr. Montori was supposed to look into a sound measurement device. So if we do have a sound violation, when I call, if I call the police, how is that going to be measured, and how are we going to make a formal complaint?
Mr. Montori?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the police department does have a decibel reader. They brought it to the meeting that we had at Warmus Edmonds last week. They've done readings over the past five or six days at various times. If a resident fails, there's an issue with noise, and they called the police department. The police will go to their residence and measure the, to do a decibel reading at the property line to see if it's over the noise bylaw. Then they'll go to Warmus Edmonds, if we believe it's from there, or whatever location we believe it's from, and check the decibel readings at that location. But we'll have to take, take into consideration any other background noise, or any other noise that may be in the area other than if the complaint is against Warmus Edmonds. But the police do have a decibel reader.
Okay, and during, during that, I'm sorry. During that discussion, is the decibel reading that's in the bylaw, is that going to be what we agreed to, is started at the decibel level at 15 after 10 o'clock, and 64?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Again. So like I said, the only problem I had with the dueling pianos was the fact that when we did speak about that, it wasn't the fact that he could control the volume on his system. It was because when I made a complaint, the problem was, is people were doing the sing-alongs, they were clapping in the chair itself. I was hoping, I'm hoping that won't be a problem. I appreciate the band. I'm saying that you guys aren't going to be doing that, because we know that's out of control. So I just wanted to call and confirm that. And you did answer my question, and I thank you kindly for that.
And Mr. And Mr. Pollock, per our, per our motion tonight, there actually, he has to have a police detail for the dueling piano. So we'll have that covered. So but appreciate the public comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you. All right, Brian, any other residents? Again, this is for the public. This is for just the resident section only, you know, but since it was on the agenda, it's fair enough that we can express concerns or whatever during the resident section, because it's on the agenda. I just wanted to make the note. That's all.
We have no callers at the moment, Mr. Chairman, but as usual, we are about 30 to 40 seconds.
Okay, so so let's do this. Let's hold the resident section open. And just like we always do, if a resident calls in, we'll entertain that, that resident. So why don't we jump to new business on the agenda? So we have a school committee designate for the elementary school building committee. I think just for our board and for the residents, this is more of an FYI. It's going to be Mr. John Statman. He's going to represent the elementary school building committee. He's the school committee designate. So I don't think there's any, any questions or comments there from the board?
Do we need a formal vote, Mr. Chairman, to put that into effect?
Oh, because it's a, thank you, Mr. Johnson, because it's a, the board is very good. Okay, we'd have, we'd have to do with a formal approval. Very good. Good catch.
I'll offer that in the form of a motion to appoint school committee member Statman as the school committee designate on the elementary school building committee.
Second.
You have a motion for a second? Okay, and I have a second by Ms. Wellman. Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Stronach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous. Okay, the next order of business is to rescind the town's local state of emergency. So, Mr. Montori, I might kick this to you, but I think we're all, hopefully, we're well aware that come May 29, the state, most state restrictions, I'm not going to get into the, all the restrictions, but essentially, on May 29, the state restrictions will no longer exist. However, the executive orders are set to expire on June 15. And they're after the June 15 for the executive orders. It's 60 days for compliance. So but I just want to bring it back to the local level, Mr. Montori. I know the Board of Health had their meeting, I believe it was last week, and they rescinded both of the, the local state of emergency, the Tewksbury state of emergency, as well as there was another order within the town. So maybe I just want to pass it to you, Mr. Montori. So the residents are clear, because this stuff is confusing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're correct. There are two orders that the board will need to vote to rescind. On March 20, 2020, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health voted two items. One, they voted emergency order regarding personal care services. And secondly, they voted to approve a declaration of emergency, a local declaration of emergency for the town of Tewksbury. Both were done, one was done March 20, the other was done March 11. And actually, both were done on March 20, I'm sorry. And in order to rescind them, we need both the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen to take, to take their votes. As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Health has done that last week. And now, we're asking that the Board of Selectmen rescind both orders. They're rescinding the order for personal services will take effect May 29, along with all of the other state, all the other items that the state is rescinding on May 29. But since the state of emergency for the Commonwealth is not being lifted until June 15, the vote that we have tonight would be rescind our local state of emergency on that same day. And the reason for the local state of emergency, when it was put in place, was simply to allow the town more flexibility in spending, to address the emergency, access to state and federal funds that may be available to local, local communities, and to procure services much easier than under normal circumstances to address the emergency. And in our particular case, we deficit spent in various areas to, for personal protection equipment, to make improvements to our facilities, and in other areas. So the local state of emergency was helpful to us. But now that we're at a point in the pandemic, that the state is lifting their state of emergency, the town can do the same. But again, that will take place on June 15, separate from when the restrictions are lifted, which is May 29.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I think I heard Mr. Johnson as well. Did I? No. Okay. Mr. Chairman, first of all, thank you for that overview, Richard. I do want to mention that today, the governor also announced that there will be a couple of things that will be moved forward in terms of the state of emergency. Town meetings being one of them, being able to be held remote, some outside dining. We don't have any, and some medical, none of those impact us, and we would obviously, I, impact our order, is my question to the town manager. I just want to be clear on that. We'll be following that under the state, correct?
Correct, correct. And we've been doing that for the most part. So the governor's emergency legislation that he filed today will be helpful to communities like ours. It's not going to impact any decision that the board's making tonight.
Great. I just wanted to double check that. Thank you so much. I have nothing else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stronach. Any other members of the board? Questions, concerns?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
There is no language in this rescindment, but there was some language around the governor's announcement that he would plan to rescind the emergency order effective June 15, should numbers support that decision? This rescindment doesn't have any contingency based on the governor having a contingency. And so I'm just wondering if we should include a phrase that says, we vote to rescind the declaration effective June 15, contingent upon the governor rescinding the state of emergency. Because if he doesn't, and then we end up in this sort of this limbo with funding issue is what I'm thinking about. I don't want to expose us to, you know, any sort of, any sort of funding issue that may happen, because a lot of these states of emergency are tied to funding. And and, you know, emergency ARPA dollars, whatever, the stuff coming out kind of all every day. So I, I'm in support of rescinding the emergency order. I just don't want us to go ahead and do it. I, I'm in support of rescinding the emergency order. I just don't want us to go ahead and do it, and then the governor doesn't do it. And we find ourselves kind of in limbo. So that's my, my main question. And my second question is, part of the governor's legislation that he filed today also included, um, measurements to allow communities to continue to meet remotely, to address the needs, give, give some runway so communities can do that. Um, I understand that we're planning on meeting back in person, um, and our boards and committees are going to do that. But my concern is being able to allow folks to still attend remotely. We haven't had a conversation about if we're going to do that or not. Um, I do think it enables public participation, and if we don't allow people to participate remotely, I'm concerned that we're effectively sending a, a class of people who maybe are unwell, or cannot get vaccinated, or whatever, cannot participate in open meetings, whereas they can from home if it's, um, if there's a Zoom component or a WebEx component to the meeting. So this board hasn't discussed if we're going to have any kind of component like that, if that's even possible, if we continue to meet and go back to meeting in person. So, um, not to, not to cause a problem. I totally support this, this, uh, rescindment. I just think that it would be useful to have those conversations about public meetings, and, um, and then just some language contingent upon the governor actually rescinding the emergency order. Because he's opening everything up, and then two weeks later, he'll decide if he's going to release the emergency, uh, order. So there's some time to see what happens vis-à-vis numbers, which, um, I do think will continue to go down, but he's leaving that, that window open, and I think that that's, um, compelling. So those are my thoughts for the board. Thank you.
You want to, let's, let's, you want to, let's, let's hammer those out. For, for the first one, Mr. Montori, is that necessary? Can we add a line in there stating as such, you know, if the governor backtracks on June fifteenth and, uh, stays, you know, it's not rescinded?
Sure, we can, we can add that. Those few words at the end of the, uh, document that, uh, board's vote is contingent upon the state lifting their state of emergency, uh, on June fifteenth. That shouldn't be a problem.
Ms. Wellman, is that, come?
Yeah.
Ms. Wellman, go ahead. Close on your point.
No, just to say, I, I think that's great. That would be, that would be satisfying.
Okay.
I just want to make sure. Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, I just want to make sure that I agree that we should do that, but does that mean that the Board of Health has to re-vote on this document, or is that still closing all the loops? Because they are, they both have, we both have to. Just want to make sure it has to be the same document, but we're changing what they've already approved, which I think we're just enhancing, but just want to check on that. Do we know?
I'll double check tomorrow. I'll take it has to be the same document. Um, they've voted already to rescind. You're just making your vote contingent on the, um, governor, and if something changes, the Board of Health can have an emergency meeting and adjust.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Wellman, as far as meeting, I mean, m- meeting, you know, back at Town Hall again, you, I don't, we don't, we talked about as a board, we don't want to put anyone at risk. So maybe I'll defer, you know, we can have those conversations, but Brian, can we have some type of hybrid? I mean, I've seen it all over different communities where they kind of have, uh, a live meeting, but also, you know, incorporate the WebEx into those meetings. Um, like Mr. Dorton did, is that something that we can look into potentially?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's, uh, we could definitely put a plan together, um, to, that I can present, uh, to the board, along with Richard.
If I can jump in, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So, what I was planning to do was develop a proposed plan for the board to look at, uh, next Tuesday, since you're meeting on the first, uh, which would give us plenty of time. The problem with, uh, and, and we can look at a WebEx component, but if we're going to do that, it really can't be for all of our boards and committees. The reason for that is we just don't have enough staff to run it. That means the telemedia department is going to be running WebEx meetings for every board and committee in the community, and we just, it's just spreads them too thin. If we wanted to limit it to certain committees, we could talk about doing that, but there are just certain committees that don't need to have it. So that's something I want to talk to, um, telemedia this week about. Uh, we were just waiting for guidance, uh, from this, from the Commonwealth. We haven't gotten much from them, but I think we have an idea what the plan will be, uh, uh, and what we want to put together to present to the board for next Tuesday's meeting to discuss it. But I would, I would ask the board to think about, uh, that we can probably do a WebEx component, but let's make it very specific to certain boards that are already on TV.
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll leave you. Ms. Wellman, is that satisfied? So we'll have a plan and a strategy. Again, we just don't want to just snap our fingers, you know, we'll, we'll slow roll it, but we don't, we don't want to put anyone in, in harm's way after they're not comfortable yet. You know, we'll slow roll it.
Hundred percent. No, I appreciate that. I think that's, um, that's a good plan to go forward, and I'm very comfortable with that. And I think that if we return to a, um, an option where there's a WebEx component for those, those boards, committees, and commissions that met previously and had television coverage, for their live meetings, I think that's a, that's a good rubric, uh, to, to follow. So I, I look forward to that, um, discussion next time. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And last but not least, too, that in the, um, the, the chair of the school committee did offer, the auditorium was, we know Town Hall is kind of small, and sometimes when we do have big ticket items, we can fill that room, and we have done it. So maybe, Mr. Montori, just one thing to consider is the school and the auditorium, um, you know, if, if that holds better capacity down the future, just food for thought. That's all.
Excellent point, Mr. Chairman, and we have, you will consider that.
Just another thought, um, on this topic, uh, for consideration, and, and, um, you know, we're just kind of, um, riffing on this right now. But, um, the open meeting law allows for members of the boards, for example, to participate, if there's a quorum in the room, by telephonic communication. Um, and that was established before the pandemic and the, um, you know, ubiquitous use of WebEx and Zoom. Um, I'm wondering if there's a middle ground here. If we have televised meetings, obviously. If residents are uncomfortable physically coming to Town Hall, there might be a vehicle by which we can have a phone line that allows for a resident to call. They have the visual capability through the television set, and we don't have to have a WebEx facilitation. We can just use a telephone line and open up the line and listen to the question from the resident. Um, just a thought, it's a combination of the technology. It's a little bit more straightforward and simple. I don't know if it's as easy to accomplish, because I don't know what our telephone capabilities are, but that's something to think about. And I'd ask just, Mr. Montori and Mr. Dorton, if they can consider that alternative for us.
Too much.
All right, very good. All right, well, back to the, um, back to the business at hand. So we have kind of looking for two motions. One for the personal services, and then the other to rescind the local town's state of emergency, uh, with a, with a, with a slight amendment. So what is the pleasure of the board? Do we have any motions?
Yes, um, I'm trying to pull up the, uh, the difference. I'm looking at them. Um, I'll move that the board approve the rescindment of the emergency order regarding personal care services.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Tarnak, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rescind the declaration of emergency for the town of Tuxbury contingent upon the governor rescinding it effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, as amended.
Perfect. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mackey. Roll call vote. Mr. Tarnak, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right, Mr. Montori, a floor is yours, town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one item, um, the town council invoice and the amount of four thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars and fifty cents for the time period of April sixteenth through April thirtieth, and I would recommend the board approve.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second motion, and a second by Ms. Wellman. Roll call vote. Mr. Tarnak, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Stain.
Okay, Mr. Todd Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, four, four zero one. Okay, um, it brings us, Mr. Montori, anything else on your side?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Brings us the minutes. Looks like we have some minutes.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer a motion to approve January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one regular session minutes.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Ms. Tarnak, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstain.
Stain in a chair votes aye as well, so four zero one abstain. It passes and brings us the board member reports. How about Ms. Tarnak?
Thank you. Um, couple of things. First of all, um, last week, the elementary building committee met. Project's moving along just, um, very, very well. Um, thank you for taking care of the membership between last meeting and this meeting. So the MSBA will get that update. Um, it's all ready to go, so we're just waiting for tonight. Um, on, um, June tenth is the next meeting of the elementary building committee. June twenty-fourth is the next meeting of the events committee. They had a meeting last Thursday, and they are proceeding with their festival. Um, it is going to be taking on, uh, more of a hometown. Uh, we removed the rides, but we have replaced it with, uh, a lot of crafts and, um, some horticultural events. So it'll be a different flavor this year, but we're looking forward to it. And the local housing partnership also met last Thursday night, and they approved the RFP, the scope of the RFP that was then passed on to Mr. Montori. I believe that it is sitting with Mr. Montori and Steve Savwick and, uh, the planning department to kind of pick through before we bring it back to you all, um, as we, as I had mentioned at the last meeting. And other than that, I have, um, no other things. I believe that we're going to be meeting before the high school, um, ceremony, but I'm looking forward to, um, that event, which I believe is on June eleventh. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, good stuff. How about Ms. Wellman?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just really briefly, um, we had, uh, at our NIMCOG meeting last week, the twenty twenty traffic study that they went through with, and there were some interesting conclusions. But basically, um, yes, of course, traffic went down, but there were changes in volume. We're basically back to, you know, eighty-five percent of where we were pre-COVID, although lately, driving on Route thirty-eight, it feels like we're right back to a hundred percent, um, this week. So, um, and there were some other interesting, I'll send the report, uh, forward to, to, um, Mr. Montori for distribution and perhaps posting. But there is an increase in heavy traffic on, on side roads, um, during twenty twenty, and there is some question about maybe that would be, um, impacting road quality, just because everybody was getting deliveries from FedEx and UPS and so forth, um, more than they had in the past. In terms of the overall volume, it wasn't as heavy, because there weren't as many cars on the road. But there's some interesting, um, traffic information there. Tuxbury is part of that traffic study, so I will forward that information to you folks. And, um, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you very much.
All right, very good. How about Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as usual, I'll keep it short and sweet. Uh, I've been working with Mr. Montori, continuing my work, Mr. Montori, uh, and Mr. Bet, our IT director, uh, on Readvamp, the town website, and that work is now, uh, in a good place and getting ready to get kicked off. So hopefully in the next few months, we'll, we'll have a, uh, some nice improvements to our town website. Ease of access, ease of access to information, usability for our citizens. Thank you.
Very good. How about, um, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, uh, one item. Um, I want to commend town manager and DPW director, town engineer. Our last meeting, we covered sidewalks, um, and unfortunately, it was a bit later in the evening. So I just want to appreciate the presentation and the good work summarizing, um, the plan and activity to date. Um, and I know that that information was put on the website and is accessible. I believe there's a YouTube version of that presentation available. And perhaps it's been replayed on the, the town's, uh, PEG channel. But in any event, I want to encourage residents, that's a common question, common concern as we go about town, um, around the topic of sidewalk and accessibility. That was a, an exceptional presentation. If residents who are paying attention at nine oh five tonight are not, uh, did not get to see it at, uh, ten o'clock two weeks ago, um, maybe they, uh, can find some time to look at it. It would be worth their time. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Jim.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, just a few on mine. I just want to commend the Tuxbury Fire Department. Uh, we had a really, really bad fire. It was that the, the pheasant hunt complex on Randall Road. Everybody was safe. Um, all the animals got out, but it was a very nasty fire, you know, uh, three alarm fires, so I commend, uh, as always, the Tuxbury Fire Department to stepping up. And, uh, again, no one got injured, but there was, um, it was a real terrible fire. So I want to commend the, um, Tuxbury Fire Department there. Um, and also just to advertise, there is going to be, believe it or not, there's going to be, um, a Memorial Day parade and a ceremony, so I just want to advertise that. There'll be a cer- uh, ceremony at the cer- cemetery at nine o'clock. Um, and for those that haven't attended, I said it's one of the best, um, it makes the hair in the back your neck stand up. It's really commendable there. And shortly thereafter, there's going to be a parade. Again, look, imagine this, two thousand twenty-one, we're back to having a parade, um, that starts at ten o'clock, and that starts from, um, the Ryan School all the way up to Abashon Hardware, um, the Abashon Hardware Complex. So that's good news for the town of Tuxbury. And for my end, that's all I had. So what I'd like to do now is transition, um, the public meeting. What I'd like to do for the board is to enter executive session. So, um, the reason for entering an executive session is Massachusetts General Law, thirty-nine, twenty-three B, to get us, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-usa- non-union personnel and contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So we'll take a roll call vote. We have, um, to enter into executive session, and what we'll do, team, is simple. We'll conclude the meeting, we'll conclude the meeting, so we won't return back to open session. We'll just con- conclude the meeting in executive session. Um, so I look to do that with a roll call vote. So I look for a motion to enter an executive session, a second, and again, then we'll do a roll call vote to actually enter into executive session.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion, and do I have a, I have a second?
Yep.
Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Tarnak, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, the chair, chair votes aye as well. So at this time again, this conclusion of tonight's meeting, we're going to enter an executive session. We'll adjourn an executive session. So, Mr. Dorton, can you please kill the feed?
Not everyone.